Again, when you hear your name called, please say here. Joyce Daring.
Here.
Jesse Martinez. Megan Hartline.
Here.
Roberta Ileya.
Here.
Emily Burr. Larry Dunn.
I'm here. Can you hear me or am I still muted?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, good.
Erica Hernandez. Jim Toll.
Here.
Erin Vega. That concludes roll call.
Thank you, Melvin. I appreciate it. Um, next on the agenda is process confirmation and I will uh go over this before the meeting starts. All council members should have their own flux portal up to follow along with the uh the meeting. We will not be screen sharing. Discussion will take place for each organization and category applied for and will be guided by our twenty twenty-three Rubix. I've got to change my. Each organization will get a mock maximum of eight minutes for discussion. We'll keep time and uh give a two-minute warning. Study sessions are recorded and recordings will be available within two business days on the Adams County website. Please be courteous on the virtual platform. This is an open discussion, but we will call on any hands raised. We will have a ten-minute break halfway through the organizational discussions, so please try and stay in the meeting outside of the break. And just a note to the public, please. Study sessions are open to the public for observation only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment. Please keep your cameras off and yourselves muted. And I do, I do appreciate you doing that for us. Alrighty.
Joyce, if I may, just interrupt really quickly. I think you might have been reading last year's notes. So it's, it's up to you, but we had decided we weren't going to time the discussion. We were gonna keep it open-ended.
That's true.
Um, so if that's, yeah.
Okay, so, but that's fine. I'll just remember next time. Found when I was looking for them the other day, so alrighty. So with that, um, welcome everybody and we will get started with our study session. Uh, the first organization is a child song. And they are actually asking for GOS and two projects. So with that, I will open it up for this discussion. Any? And you can just jump in anytime you want, well, if you don't want to raise your hand, so.
I'm pulling up my notes. I took Megan's, I took Megan's advice and I took copious notes, so let me just see.
It's a good idea.
Well, you pulled those up, um, I can, I can jump in. I really love the inclusive focus of these two projects and um I really love that this is an Adams County organization. Um, and I was really interested in the new focus on reaching seniors, so reaching a new audience. Um, I did notice that there was a small and the same discrepancy between revenue and expenses on both projects. So some issues with financials. Um, the, the other concern that I have when thinking about um the financial stability, um, which is one area where we rate these uh projects, is that there's a, a long-term personal loan um, from one of the founders with an upcoming retirement. Um, which I, I don't think um is an issue for these projects, but I think when we're thinking about um, long-term financial stability is something that I would love to see um addressed in future uh grant applications.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I also noted for myself that there was a slight discrepancy in the financials and we do really like to have the budgets balanced, so please be aware of that. Um, and I, I also uh am interested in the new expansion of, you know, reaching out to the seniors. I'm just kind of wondering how they're gonna do that. So it, I think that was very good. Um, and I just noted that they extremely, they have a lot of collaboration going on and I think that makes um, for a viable uh program in reaching out to the different Title I schools, so.
Was this the, this is the group I think that's also reaching into foster systems, if I remember correctly?
Let's see, um. Yes, you're right. They uh also provide uh no-cost music education for at-risk and foster children.
And foster, foster children. And that for me, looking at in terms of pipelines and future growth of Adams County and all of those sorts of things that really stuck out to me as a huge positive, that they were looking at the next generation and trying to use the arts in terms of dealing with some of the social issues that we're facing as a growing area. So I just want to say that out loud.
Yeah, I agree. And also one thing that I noted that um they're also translating uh some of their programming evals not only into Spanish but other languages, which I'm interested in finding out maybe which other languages they are. But definitely they are becoming more inclusive in the community, so I, I really like that. Any other comments?
I just want to welcome Jesse to the meeting in case anyone has their, isn't on their screen.
Hey.
All right.
Hello.
So if I'm not hearing any other comments or questions, we'll move to the next organization, which is Adams County Arts and Cultural Commission. Also, they also are requesting GOS and two projects. So with that, I will open up the discussion. Excuse me if you see papers flying over here. Okay.
I'm sorry, I was just a couple of minutes late. Just in terms of protocol for you guys, do you submit once we finish talking to them? Or should we reserve and then submit later? I'm sure that was said in the three minutes before I popped in.
So.
No, it wasn't, Erin, and that's a good question.
Yeah, so when you say submit, what, what do we?
So in flux, in flux, you can save or submit. You do not have to submit during the session. You could take information that you get from each other in the study session and adjust it and do it later. There is a final deadline for submitting all of them.
But we could submit.
You can if you wish, yes.
Great, thank you.
I wasn't even thinking about flux when you asked that question, so.
My apologies, I wasn't clear. I'm the newbie, thank you.
You're fine. It changes all the time, so we're good.
And I, I have a, a technical question. Do I have to save every time I go out on one of these? Once I've gone in and marked it up, can I just close it and, and not necessarily save it?
I think you have to save it. I'm, Kendall, do you have to save it or?
Yes, you have to save. Um, that'll update the total scores as well. Actually, I think Adams automatically totals, but yes.
If I don't make any changes, I just come in, I review it. Even though I don't make any changes, I save it.
It's just best rule of thumb. Um, the system doesn't automatically save, so we just, best thing to do is just click the save button as much as you can.
Alrighty. With that, shall we move on to our second um organization? Which is the Adams County Arts and Cultural Council?
I just have one question. I'm sorry. Um, I was, I was looking for the hand raise on this bloody thing and I can't find it. Anyway, um, Megan, you mentioned that there's a deadline for submiss, for submitting our uh, our applications. What is the deadline?
What a great question. And if I had that in my head, I would be the most organized council member. Um, it is after our last study session. Um, I don't have the exact date in mind, but I think it's at, at least a few days after our last study session.
Yeah, it's about a week after our last study session.
Okay, uh, so we could, we can keep these all uh, until the end of the, until the end of the last study sessions before we. Okay, okay, well, that's, that's, that's good to know. Uh, there's one other thing. I lost one of mine. Uh, we, we are going to go over number fifteen, I believe. It was, let me just see if I can pull it up.
It would be.
Centro Cultural Mexicano?
Yes, yes.
Uh, I lost that one and I don't know how to get it back. I um, I was probably a little tired or something and I pressed, when I opened the, when I opened the application, I pressed save before I indicated whether or not I had a, a, a conflict. Um, and it disappeared, so I don't know how to get it back.
Yeah, it should be in your, in your progress uh folder. Or your, uh, on the left menu bar, there's a progress uh which gives you like all the applications you reviewed. You can go back there and pull it up there. Um, so when you're reviewing the applications, you'll score, save, and then it'll go to that file. And then when you're ready to submit, you'd go back there. And then, um, and the purpose of the study sessions is really to get feedback from one another about the application, whether it's its finances, its programming. Um, you know, as a group, and then you can go back to your scoring and, and update that based on, you know, how the conversation goes or any insight you might get from the uh, the study session.
Gotcha, thanks.
And, and last, I just want another caveat to this. It, when did you, when you had the conflict of interest screen up? Did you, which button did you hit? Because that may be an issue also.
I didn't, I didn't hit either of them.
You didn't hit either one of them, so you should be able to go back as, as Jesse suggested, so.
And find it again, okay. I'll keep an eye out.
Lawrence, I just found it. It's in your in-progress folder.
Oh, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Are we ready? Okay. So do we have any discussion concerning the Adams County Arts?
Um, I think this is a really exciting application because we talk a lot about cross-county impact. And I love the focus on the whole county. Um, it, you know, including some of the communities that don't necessarily have some of the same outreach and opportunities from organizations. So I love that.
You know, one thing I really enjoyed was um the comment that they use the youth to identify issues and then create the artwork that explores the issues and helps to, helps the artist. So I, I really enjoyed that part of it. It's a very interesting concept. Also think they have a healthy, healthy budget, which is good. Um, highly visible. Anything else?
I'd love a little insight from, from folks who've done this before. The second question in all of these project reviews, the enterprise and creativity demonstrated for project. I have my definition of what, of what that is, having never done this before. Um, what are some others? Since this is the chance we get to talk about it, how are other folks sort of viewing that question and rating that question?
So for me, I look at innovative ways of um working on the different projects that they're presenting, um, you know, things like that, you know. Collaboration and a lot of, it is a big thing for me also is. So I think it's, it's how you interpret it yourself, you know, because everybody has a different interpretation of things. Megan, maybe you or Jesse have a different idea than I do, but.
Uh, some, I, I think of it a, a couple of different ways. Like enterprise for me, I'm like uh synonymous with hustle. I'm like, oh, this organization is like moving and shaking and like trying new things and like doing other things. Or this is also the area where um sometimes with my ratings, I have to look for like different ways to put the things that I'm excited about. But like if someone's trying something that we haven't seen before, um, I'm like, oh, that's enterprise, that's creativity.
That, that feels in line with what, the way I was thinking, so that's, that's good. It's nice to be enforced, thank you.
But you can also interpret the ratings in your own way if you do it consistently for everyone.
And we all do too. Alrighty. Is there anyone else?
I just like some of the areas this is touching, like, you know, the, the pride stuff, it's, that's new to Adams County. And then the Wellby neighborhood and uh that explored Arcaya neighborhood. Like it's, it's kind of cool to see that getting some attention, having grown up in the area.
It's true. Thank you. Anyone else? Ready. With that, if I don't hear anything else, we'll move to the next organization, which is Adams County Historical Society. They are requesting GOS and funding for two projects. So I'll just open it up for discussion. So for me, I guess, I guess I'll just kind of jump in here. Um, I do appreciate everything that Adams County Historic Society does throughout the years. They put on some uh very interesting, you know, historic type events and people look forward to um attending them all the time. But also Adams County Cultural Council, in my, we only allow two projects, you know, per grants. And what I'm seeing, and I could be wrong, that I'm seeing three projects rolled into first grant. And I really, really want our folks, our organizations to call out the projects that they want funded and not um fold them into one, one grant to be, to be funded that way. So um, that's my comment on, on the first one. And then, um, adjusted to continue on, um, the second grant, they're actually asking for capital uh funding. And typically, um, we don't fund capital projects. But I did some research and SEFD has some exemptions. And at under ten thousand dollars, they actually will fund some uh capital projects. But Adams County has never done that. So I am uh gonna kind of throw it out to the group, wondering how we want to handle this.
Yeah, I uh agree with you, Joyce. That was a little bit of my concern, was building that wheelchair ramp. I mean, I, I do feel like it does have some resemblance of, you know, some accessibility inclusivity um aspect of that, but when we are looking at rating, I don't feel like it falls within the rubric in order to effectively rate the project too. Um, so I'm kind of, I was, I, I didn't actually score that part just because I wanted to see what others were gonna uh think or say about that uh project too.
Yeah.
I, I would also make the point that um they're requesting general operating support. And this is exactly the kind of thing that we want organizations to use general operating support for is the kinds of things they need to do to keep their organizations in Adams County in good shape and running and accessible. So my thought, or that, that's GOS. I, I'll, I'll just pile on another concern. Um, I noticed that the request for GOS detailed um events which were covered in both GOS and the project one.
That's right.
What's the significance of the, the GOS request only being one dollar?
You have to put some amount in the, in the computer or, you know, when they're filling it out. So that's, that's the only reason for that.
It's a default for flux. It doesn't, the way that our GOS is funded is based on a formula of earned revenue and how much the council is contributing. So the dollar means nothing at this point. And we won't know what each organization is funded for GOS until we do the scoring um spreadsheet much further down the line.
And so taking it back to the uh, to the ramp, I'm just uh, I agree with you. I mean, I went back and forth with the, looking at the rubric and trying to figure out how I could even score it um and didn't. You know, because I, I just doesn't fit in with anything. So I guess, um.
Zoe, would we know what their general operating amount was last year?
I didn't check that. I don't know if we have that or not.
Uh, let me take a look. I'll let you know in a couple of minutes.
Yeah, just to kind of see if that's, if there's an increase in the allocation that would uh cover a thirty-five hundred dollar.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's, it's depending on how significant it is, but.
Yeah, I just don't know.
While we look that up, I'll also say that um SCFD year after year is a very major um contributor to the Historic Society. And I would love to see some diversification in funding streams, either getting some other donors um, or looking at ways for the events to um bring in some revenue. Like instead of giving away cookies, like are there concession opportunities? Um, the other thing I noted was that there are organizations later on tonight, I haven't read all applications. So maybe there's more than one, but there's one tonight that is partnering with the Historic Society for an event. And I would love to see those kinds of partnerships reflected in the application. Uh, we love partnerships. We love organizations working together. Um, and hearing a little bit more about that would be good.
I agree.
Um, I have a.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna answer the question of what we funded them last year, which was twenty-three thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars. Um, and that the max at this point and last year was forty thousand dollars.
So it sounds like we're not prohibited from funding the capital project um by, by our bylaws or by SCFD practices. Given that it's under ten thousand dollars, but that there is some overlap with the GOS support that they're asking for.
Um, not to, not to harp on this one application, because I know there's so many to go through. Um, I was, there, I, I would have liked to see a little bit more conversation in their EDIA efforts in terms of, and I think this goes back to their partnerships and collaborations. Um, I feel like saying, we welcome everybody, isn't actually answering the question of what are you doing to actively promote um EDIA or IDEA, however you want to phrase that acronym. Um, just in terms of diversity initiatives, and they may be actively working on it. Like you said, Megan, I'm not super familiar with this group except what I've read online in this application. So I'm, again, I'm the newbie. Um, but just opening, you're saying you're open to everybody, to me doesn't actually answer the question of what are you doing to actively reach into those communities. So um, my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So I'm just, I'm, I am struggling still with the second project, you know, with the ramp. Not quite sure how to handle this. Um, we don't really want to set a precedent because I don't, I cannot recall ever um having an organization ask for a capital expense, uh, whatever the amount was.
Yeah, Zoe, do we have any, anything we can kind of refer or revisit this one, just to kind of see, I think like policy-wise, just?
Yeah.
Give us a little bit more clarification or?
No, Joyce is right. I, it's nothing that, that I'm aware of or that I've seen. Um, we have, uh, Dana responded and in the quest for figuring out whether or not this was allowed, um, and as Joyce mentioned, it is within the limit that SEFD would allow for capital improvements. Uh, they have a, a non-exhaustive list of exclusions. Um, so it really is up to the council whether or not you would like to fund. And I would just remind the council, if you simply decide to score and they score low, they'll still be funded. They'll just be funded at a smaller percentage, so it's not, then it really doesn't, I don't think it does what you're saying, Joyce. And I also think it doesn't really help the organization either, because then they can't afford to do the project, so.
Was it not the case that we had some organizations where the score was so low that it was below the cutoff for funding?
Yes, that is true. Yes, there is a threshold if it's below, I think, I want to say somewhere in the thirties. I think it's a sixty is the max. Or you could determine that it's ineligible.
But I'm wondering, the GOS may cover this, uh, depending on the funding, you know, the funding that they've done.
My suggestion would be to handle it by scoring, um, rather than trying to, and, and this is just my suggestion and I, I would be open to other ways, but I, I would suggest handling this by scoring. Um, because I think there could be situations down the line where GOS is used to supplement projects that are not capital projects. And so we don't want to necessarily get super fine on is something GOS and project and looking at that in deep analysis. I would rather maybe, even though, even though the categories don't match super well with the project, maybe we can handle this by rating. What are other thoughts?
I think that's a good idea, Megan. And then, you know, maybe we can bring the conversation back to the retreat. You know, so we can have a more detailed conversation about possibly what we want to do in the future, if there are requests like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think just even on the G, uh, GOS kind of narrative. You know, they do state that the Adams County Historic Society is responsible for the care of the property. Um, and that they do not get funding uh or building maintenance support from any uh local government. So, um, yeah. So, yeah.
Which could be an opportunity to explore when we're talking about diversifying funding streams.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I, I think we should score and then determine the outcome of that. And then I think revisit that at the uh, at the uh retreat.
Right.
Now I just offer one piece of information.
Sure.
Um, in the guidelines, projects are defined as a restricted grant to support a specific event or connected set of activities with a pre, a beginning and an end, explicit objectives and a predetermined cost.
Thank you.
All right. That is pretty specific.
It's very specific, and I would also like to say, I think the question here isn't whether or not it can be funded by GOS and therefore it, isn't a, it actually really has nothing to do with GOS. The question is whether or not it's eligible to be a project. Whether they use their GOS to pay for it would be entirely up to them.
That's right. That's right. So.
So do we then want to say that this isn't a project and handle it in some other way rather than scoring?
I, I, I just, um, I'm new, so I'm just asking, because I don't understand. So like if, if we were to score it, wouldn't we be then saying that it's eligible?
Yes, yes.
I think that's Megan's point, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because according to what she just said, it doesn't sound like it is eligible if it's, if it's a capital project.
How it would be handled, um, because I have this in my other counties, is if it was not to be considered for. How it would be handled, because I have this in my other counties, is if it was not to be considered for funding. You would just place zeros within that project request, and then that would be noted as it wouldn't be considered for funding.
Does that negate the whole thing?
It negates project two, if you want to move forward in that direction.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. And the more I think about it, although I like the idea of scoring, in my mind, as soon as I read it. It didn't feel eligible to me. So I think I would weigh in on that side and just say that it wasn't eligible. And then if they utilize their GOS to, to create. You know, and to, to build the ramp, that's fine, you know, but I would say it, for me, this is ineligible.
So if we're as a council deciding that it's ineligible, should we all agree on that? And per Kendall's technical direction, all score is zeros?
And so just to be clear, you'd score normally on GOS, normally on project one, and then it would just be under project two that the zeros would come into play.
Yeah.
We don't score GOS at this point.
I couldn't remember.
It's fine.
And Kendall, when we've had issues in the past where an organization was ineligible for something. For example, if they didn't qualify for GOS, that's one example that we have had. We actually call them out and say that it was ineligible. And I can't remember how SCFD wrote it in the letter. When, when the funding happens, but is it possible to say that this project was ineligible? Because I feel like just putting zeros is just, I think it would be more helpful to actually say the word, the word ineligible.
Yeah, we can definitely relay the information to the organization for you and just inform them that unfortunately, this doesn't comply with. The definition of a project grant and therefore won't be considered for funding. This does not affect your GOS or your project one request.
Great.
All right. With that, are there any more questions or comments about Adams County? All right. We'll move on to the next organization, which is August, Augustina Arts. And they are requesting two projects, I believe. Yes. So with that, I'll open up the discussion. For me, I, you know, I've always, Augustina Arts always has developed, it has used a lot of collaboration. With other organizations to put on some very fine projects in the past. And there, it looks like they're expanding even more so to have additional offerings. As to the different audiences. So they've always had a unique. Unique events. We've attended a few of them, so.
I really like that they included the provision of instruments in their project one grant. I think in terms of access and effectiveness of a program, I think it just shows that they've really thought about the holistic nature. Of the project, if they're going to be reaching children, creating pipelines and that sort of stuff. So for what it's worth, I really enjoyed that detail and that they took the time to add that into their numbers. And showed, showed some really nice foresight.
Foresight, enterprise or creativity.
There you go. All right, anyone else? All righty. With that, we'll move to the next organization, which is the Aurora Symphony Orchestra. And I believe that they just have. One project, if I'm reading this correctly. With that, I'll open up the discussion.
You know, it seems like ASO is really thinking about the future and thinking about changes. And this program that they have laid out seems really achievable for this year and effective.
So I, I really appreciate the. Idea that they're, not only their concertists are not only in English, but they're English and Spanish, fully bilingual. And the, the kiddos have hands on, on the instruments, which I think really incentivizes them to really want to learn more. And I like, I like their little cliche of petting zoo, you know, when they were talking about the instruments. I thought that was really fun. And then also, they also have the donation campaign sponsoring a child that wants to. Go to the concert after all of this. So I, I think that was really creative.
Not for nothing, the petting zoo is, is inside the orchestra is a pretty famous group. That, the, the pretty successful group that sort of has, has locked that instrument, petting zoo. I know there's collaboration. These two groups have both used the people's buildings, so I know them, I know them well. So the petting zoo, it's, it's great, but it, they absolutely stole it. And I say, good for you. It's a great idea. Steal that idea.
However it works. I know, I know. Anything, anyone else? No? All right, we will move on to our next organization, which is backstory theater. And I do believe they have requested funding for just one project, fairy tale, yeah, theater.
You can jump in on this one and say that I, if we're talking about hustle and creativity and enterprise. This was really strong for me. I love the collaboration with Growing Home. To offer programming at the food bank. I think that that's a really great way to reach people. When we're talking about like challenges with accessibility and reaching people, that's such a good creative way to do it. I did also note that the project was at a one hundred percent support request, which exceeds our. Guidelines.
Yeah. That's exactly what I noted too. I really like the idea of looking at the food banks. It is a great opportunity. Anyone else? Right. Our next organization is Ballet Ariel, and they are asking for two projects for funding. And I'll open up the discussion. What I, I'll just kind of jump in a little bit. One thing that kind of jumped out at me was. They tailor their shows to their audience and to the needs of the, the younger folks there. And they kind of look at what they need and then they tailor their programs for it. So I really thought that was very interesting. And again, another organization has a strong collaboration with other dance companies. In music ensembles.
I agree, a super strong collaboration record here.
I've got a question. When it's talking about number one, impact on Adams County residents and committee, uh, communities. Which I know can be open to interpretations like all of these. When I'm looking at a project like project one, right, where they're, where they're anticipating a fairly low attendance. I'm just curious how, what people's thoughts are, what other people's thoughts are on, on rating that first. Especially if we're looking at atomic attendance numbers, how many Adams County residents could actually technically, could be impacted? What are people's thoughts? How have they been approaching that question?
I feel like I jump in a lot, but I have a lot of thoughts about this.
That's good.
I think it really depends. Sometimes impact can be super deep. So we get some program requests that are like year long internships for youth. And so if that's like a low number of participants, but a very deep impact, I still rate that as a strong impact. Especially if it's unique opportunities. I also don't look at sheer numbers as my only record of impact, because I also think about. Impact including opportunity. So an event that's a ticketed event that brings in a thousand people. But the thousand people all had to pay for their ticket is a different kind of impact than a free event. That might only see a few people, but is that a place or. Like, like a way of accessing arts or culture that people might not have that access otherwise. So numbers aren't my only thing is.
Yeah, that makes sense. So using this as a specific example, the idea of these funds. Helping to underwrite tickets in addition to aiding with venue rental expenses. And I go, okay, how does that actually impact? For your, for, for example, ticket prices for people seeing the show, right? Or have, I'm not, I'm not seeing a direct connection between your dollars actually sponsor so many children's tickets. As a, as a very broad example. So that's just where my, where my thinking is on that. Yeah, and I think like, when we think about SCFD in general, like more accessibility to the arts. And, and culture. So, you know, programming and a wide range of accessibility opportunities, I think, for the county. And so us looking at more of the accessibility could be seen like that as impact, or it could be like actually, you know. You investing in educational components and programming that's really going to help deepen more artistic. Expansion or capacity building to like more deeper, like, you know, student connection or community connection. So, yeah.
And I think too, with the impact, the more I think about it, many of these organizations go into the title on schools. Where the kiddos don't have the opportunity to see ballet and some of the other cultural activities. And so that impact, I think in itself, when you look at it, is, is very valuable.
Uh, Larry, you have a hand raised?
Yeah, I was just thinking about the whole impact concept. And, and being new at this, of course, like, you know, Erin, I am. You know, I, I'm going strictly by the, by the rubric when I look at, when I look at impact. And if I see an organization that. Sort of lets the population come to them. I, I, I tend to score a little lower. I mean, sometimes they can't help it, you know, depending on their organization, what they do. But if there is a complete lack of outreach or a. Or, or, or just a lapse in, in, in an organization, depending on what it is. What, what could possibly, what I think they could possibly do, then, then I, I, I seem to, to score accordingly. Uh, one thing that, that, that I notice in the. You know, in the, in the, in the scoring rubric is, is D in number one. If they have a plan for active engagement of Adams County residents. And, you know, if they have any kind of plan, then I tend to score higher. If, if. If they're an organization that, you know. Just sort of lays back and say, we welcome everybody, come on in, then that's not outreach to me. So that, that has a lesser, that gets a lesser score in, in, in my view. I, and, and I guess the last thing I do, when I, the last thing I consider is the, the EDIA. Aspect of the whole thing, you know, that hasn't, that has an effect on impact. So I, 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 I consider that as well. I'm just, like I said, I'm new here, so I'm just listening for the most part and finding out how the veterans think. But I, you know, I just want to know if, if, if I'm on the right track in these, in these things. There's a lot of subjectivity, it seems, in, in, in some of these scoring, you know, in, 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 in all of these things. And I just wondered if I'm, if I'm on the right track.
Larry, don't you worry. That's when I first came in my first year as well. That was primarily my question as well as like, you know, you know, should we, the, the discussion was, should we calibrate, you know, our scores? To determine like, you know, our, our pinpoint definitions that we all can base on. But I think to Joyce's point, you know, she's done this for a while. Like I think it really comes down to really reading the application, engaging yourself with the rubric. And really kind of determining that, because it's all consolidated scores. So we'll bring a little different aspect of scoring to the, the picture for these organizations. But I, that's my very, you, once you, once you start reviewing all these seventy four for your first year. You'll get a hang of like, you know, what you'll see, what sticks out, and you'll see trends and innovation and creativity and impact. Gotcha. In all its various forms.
And if we could all norm our scores and score the same way, then we could just get a computer to do it, like the subjectivity and the, the human input. It's like part of why.
Isn't there, isn't there some AI that can do this?
Yeah, I think the chatbot, we'll just hand it all off to chat. I'm sure the organizations would love that.
Yeah, I know. You know, and as many times too that I've done it, I struggle every, every year. You know, going through it and trying to do the best for each organization. So is, it, it's a hard job to do, you know, because you really want to do the best for each one. Okay, anyone else? Let me turn my page back. Yeah, Bluff Lake Nature Center. And they are asking for funding for one project. Okay.
I'm just reviewing it like in previous years, I think they really have taken our feedback, I think. And really seeing about the expansion into partnerships within Adams County. So really excited and thrilled to see that kind of bridge. I think in previous applications, they were doing it all there at Bluff Lake, and now they've really partnered to expand it to. You know, the counties that they're serving. And so, so kudos to them. And yeah, these are important study sessions so that they can hear and learn about what we're thinking. And just giving advice on how they can grow as organizations and, and really serve communities in greater ways, greater ways.
I especially love that for those partnerships, they're offering totally free programming. I think that's really great. I love those partnerships. And I'm not saying this as a, and you did the thing we asked and more. But I'll just note that one thing that the council, I think, would really value is. Reach extended to schools and communities further out. That's just something I think we would find very exciting in future. reach extended to schools and communities further out. That's just something I think we would find very exciting in future years. Yeah.
And I totally agree with everyone that spoke. And I love the idea that their entrance fees are, fees are free and they're providing field trips now. So I do think they listen to everything everyone has said. Okay, anyone else?
Just give me one second. I'm not as fast as you, you all. Give me one second. Look over the project and look over my notes. I'm like, by the time I get down to the projects and the notes, I go, oh my goodness, you guys are so fast.
I had more notes in flux, except I can't pull it up, so.
Oh, this was gonna be, okay, yes. So, so for organizations that are doing like their attendance, their attendees, anticipated attendees. Yeah, this is a question. They talk about 25% of total family, and this, this comes up in a few of these, a few of these applications where, like Larry said, you know, you're coming to us and we're tracking where you're coming from. How are people feeling about that in terms of actual SCFD promotion within Adams County, right? Because I feel like that's sort of a goal of this council, right? Where we're really trying to promote an SCFD presence within the county. Now, of course, 25% of their attendees, according to their stats, enjoy this service, which is fantastic and should not be discounted. And I love that they're very specific to their metrics and they obviously track, track their metrics very well, which is great. What are people's thoughts on on ratings for that?
I see Megan's eyes. She wants to answer.
Trying to give someone else a chance.
Go ahead.
Um, I have a lot of different thoughts about this. I, there are some requests we'll see later on in the alphabet for events that are tracking attendance and might be very geographically far from Adams County. And there are other organizations, like Bluff Lake is pretty close to Adams County. So I, sometimes I think about proximity a little bit differently. I also do think that I, I really appreciate the organizations that track attendance numbers super well, but also talk about their specific outreach within Adams County beyond just like mailers or advertising, but talk deeply about the relationships that they build with other organizations or schools and how that translates into attendance versus just, we advertised and some, some of the attendance is from Adams County. So I, I consider those factors a little differently.
And then specifically, when they're talking about mileage and their budgets, is that, is that line item, things like bus transportation, things like, like, right, if they're working with kiddos, is transportation mileage, could they be including, we're actually helping kiddos get from school to the place? Or is that because I'm not seeing that written down? And it is in terms of accessibility. It'd be nice to see a little clarifying on if any budget is actually being used since we're bringing folks from Adams County to Bluff Lake. Can somebody speak to whether that cost could be part of that line item?
Here's my take. This is just my opinion as someone reading a grant, and the grant has to stand on its own. I would hope that an organization would tell us if they were busing people in, like they would include it in the narrative and be specific about it. Often my assumption, just my assumption, not knowing the organization beyond what they put in the grant, is that if this is mileage, it's them, program staff traveling to schools, the, the mileage for traveling there.
Okay, yeah, I'm reading specifically. Bluff Lake has retarded past years to increase our outreach. They're 25% participation in Adams County. We hope to increase that percentage to 29%, thanks to the increased funding around this county, which will help us cover things like mileage and transportation.
There you go.
But I go, is that my transportation of students? So anyway, just in terms of clarity of use, that is just one little thing where I, I think I can glean from that, but would be helpful. Would be helpful.
All right. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on then to Boulder Ballet. And they are asking funding for one project. It looks, I'll just kind of jump in here a little bit. Looks like they're going to actually be reaching out to six of our Adams schools, which is great. And they are doing some programming that is actually dictated by, from what I can read here, dictated to the school's needs, which I think I noticed that in a couple of other grants too, where they're actually looking to assist the schools with within their, their type, such as ballet or whatever it is, and helping them develop and teach the kiddos and kind of focus on what the school needs are, rather than them coming in with a preset program.
I saw a flag, there's sort of a red flag for me, which was the orchestra pulling out of Nutcracker. I didn't, sorry, pulling out is the wrong phrase. They're not collaborating with the orchestra anymore on Nutcracker, I think. I'm trying to go back to the narrative.
I don't have that pulled up, but I think they were creating.
I was just curious about that.
Yeah, yeah. I think they were creating something new that financially it wasn't viable this year. That, and I don't have it up, so I can't recall totally. And was it this group?
I'm trying to find it. I feel.
I don't think it was this, this.
Maybe it wasn't this group, maybe I was.
I don't think so. I think it was a different one.
I must have been thinking about a different Nutcracker. That's what you get for doing, for looking at 70 some applications. All right, great. That's great. But I did notice they had strong corporate support, which I thought was great. Again, I'm new to this. But seeing, seeing folks that have really gone after different revenue streams. Megan was talking about diversifying revenue streams. That looked, that looked really great on page to me. Seeing a diversity of revenue streams, so for what that's worth.
I was just, I'm just going to plant a seed in our box here for cultural council. It's just, I think when we're thinking about organizations supporting kind of the work and students in schools in, in Adams County, you're looking at impact, just I think the exposure to different art forms is great. And I think it's, it's kind of like helps inspire and really activate, you know, students in schools around kind of the various art forms that aren't necessarily accessible. Just trying to see, I think about like, maybe this is just cultural, maybe it's a county thing, but just trying to see how we, we think about like that continuation. So, you know, like, you know, of course, you know, with grants and you get that one time, you know, money, like, you're not cultivating that relationship over time, like just wanting to see how we can encourage that so that it's not just, you know, we're going to go to this, that or one school this year and then next year, you know, you're not going to continue the programming. But just thinking about that, kind of that impact of really developing a pipeline or supports around that art form and that exposure, so that it keeps on going. But that's just my own little tangent.
I kind of like the little phrase that jumped out at me a little bit, that creative expression without judgment. I like that. I do like that. Excuse me one second. I'm in a meeting. Sorry, guys. Okay, but I, I just felt that that gave, gave the kiddos that were in the program the ability to express themselves, you know, more freely. So I like that. Anyone else? Next one is Boulder Metal Smithing Association, and they are just asking for funding for one project. Okay, any questions, comments?
Um, I actually liked their, I'm surprised for the amount that they're asking and the reach of students that they're able to do that, especially on metal smithing. I just feel like that's a little bit more technical. You need more resources and money to actually do that and more time. So really, you know, as in reviewing even last year's application, the innovation, and I think that art form being able to, or that medium being able to be accessible and the reach that they have with just the little money and that little investment that we give even with Adams County, I think is pretty exciting and cool and just love their work overall.
Yeah, I agree. I just think it's so unique. I think this is their second year of asking for funding, maybe the third. But it's just unique. I mean, they're focused on different types of learning, such as Navajo and Asian and several other different techniques. So I just think this is really a great way to do it.
I think they mentioned the cool factor and they're so right. This has so much cool factor. It's so unique. And in addition to just being a really cool art form, they also put so much thought into making this deeply accessible and meaningful for the, the teachers and the students with setting up kits with really, like Jesse, you were talking about like the relationship, like really going deep with how they can have an impact. And again, like with such a, a small project budget, they're having such a huge impact. I love this program. I want to support them so much. I want them to just keep doing what they're doing.
I know.
Better narrative. I apologize, Joyce.
No, no.
They're in their narrative, yeah, using actual quotes from students got me. The groups, the groups that really listened to their students took note of what's saying. So in this particular application, the, you know, they obviously have a set of questions. Did this project work well? Yes. Did you use the kid as intended or did you get creative? We did both, right? So, you know, putting those quotes in there made it feel personal to me. I also want to say the fact that they embrace their social media is, you know, I think a lot of arts groups sometimes struggle with the idea of how to interact. And that's an excessive, in my mind, social media is an accessibility access pipeline, right? Like, a lot of folks have access to, to social media right now, and that's a way to get your message through. And that's a way to get your narrative through. So the fact that they are an influencer, and I went on their Instagram page just to fact check that, and I went, yep, absolutely. They are, they are using their resources wisely to Jesse's point. So just want those, kudos to them for really embracing that and building, building all that up and using specific quotes in there from their, from their students and teachers.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right. So now we're at the halfway mark. Do we want to take a break or do we want to continue on?
I'd like to get a cup of tea. Can we, can we take a?
Okay, all right. See you in 10. So at 6:17? All right.
Thank you.
Sure. Sure. I know, I know, and I love it. But on the other
If only it would be like that way all year, like, you know, say, no daylight savings time, and then we could
I just realized the short memory that Colorado have, wasn't it this snowing Monday? And Tuesday?
Yeah, last night, it was snowing last night.
We're fine with the sunlight now.
It's gonna be eighty degrees in a couple days and then we'll probably have another snowstorm, you know? But then some of us are going to Mexico, so. It's true. I know, I know. I know. Is it six eighteen? Okay, are we back? I think I've got, do we have everybody? We're still missing Lawrence. That's it?
Yes, see Lawrence.
I'm back.
You're back?
Roberta.
I'm here.
All righty. Well, let's move on then. Oh, let me just do this really quickly. Just as a reminder to the audience, study sessions are open to the public for observations only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment and please keep your cameras off and yourselves muted. So thank you for that. Thank you. All right. So let's go on to our next organization, which is Boulder Museum of Contemporary Art. And I just have to say that I have to thank this organization for reaching out to all areas of Adams County, including Bennett. We always encourage all of our organizations to provide any type of services to, you know, the the outlying areas and so thinking that, you know, with their collaboration with anything, which is a good collaboration and then reaching out to Bennett also is wonderful. So.
And Joyce, to that point, I love the collaboration with libraries. I think that's great. If there were, and again, this is just a wish list for the future. If there were a possibility to expand the school project to schools and additional Adams County communities, we would love that as well.
Yes, absolutely. Anyone else? I just noted and I don't know if this is really a high number enough, but to me, it seems like it is that they're presenting one hundred and seventeen free programs to the schools, which I think is great.
I am looking at their, I apologize.
No, you're good. Go ahead.
I do wonder about their anticipated attendees for Project One. I don't know if anybody else flagged that as, I mean, eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, yeah.
I, I'm just curious about that, where they're getting, where they're getting that number. Yeah, so anyway.
This is me putting my library hat on. I I bet if these are projects that are in the public library, that they might be using foot traffic or gate counts to the library. So everyone who's visiting eighty thousand would not be wild for like numbers of visitors.
That's really great. Thank you.
Yeah, and when you look at it's the entire Adams County, you know, I think that's acceptable. Anyone else?
I really like this idea of residencies within, within institutions. I think when we're talking about longevity, like Jess was, Jess was, Jesse was bringing up before, putting somebody into a place and time for longer than, say, a workshop, putting them in there longer than I I love that idea of continued engagement and are you being creative with your continued engagement? That really stuck out to me. So hats off to them.
I agree. I love that kind of like you get to meet someone again and again and talk to them about their creative projects and see their project grow over time. Like, I think that's such a interesting, deep impact way to engage with the creative process.
I agree totally. Anyone else? Hearing none. We all move to the next project or the organization, rather. The Boulder Philharmonic Orchestra and they are requesting funding for two projects. I will open the conversation up.
I considered making a macro of this comment. This is again a wish list. We would love to see expansion to schools and additional Adams County communities. I think this is a good program. I think this is great connections. I I love that they're keeping connections with the schools that they're working with and and more would be great.
I agree with you. I really enjoyed this program and and I think after the entire discovery program that then they have a field trip that goes to Mackey, which I think is kind of, you know, it excites the kids, you know, to want to do more. So I thought that was pretty interesting. Also that they actually provide financial support for kiddos that can't afford to attend the different events. So they actually and but I was wondering, and I don't know, maybe I missed it. They said they were going to have a couple outdoor venues, but they didn't really say where they were going to hold them. So I was kind of curious where that was.
You took the words right out of my mouth. How do people feel about TBDs in relationship to question number five? Evidence the submitting organization can complete this project successfully.
And I think you have to look at what they've done in the past as well as what they're presenting right now also.
Roberta, did you have a?
Oh, I was just thinking it makes me nervous. I'm just knowing how, you know, public sector stuff is with any type of planning, like and maybe that's just my experience with the city of Thornton, but it I feel like you have to let folks know a year in advance or something.
So we like to see those things, you know, put down. Understanding too, sometimes they always can't get the venue and, you know, right when they're looking for it, but it's, it's a question and it's always a question in my mind. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to the next organization, which is the Brighton Cultural Arts Commission. So they are asking for GOS and one project and one visual arts request. Open up the dialogue again. I guess I kind of start this a little bit. I I do like the idea that they're, you know, advertising their programs in both English and Spanish for the performers and the performances and that they provide free concerts. I think that is a good avenue. I I did notice that their requests are over our cap. Their financial, so that will be reduced. But I also, one of the other things that I noted was in their, in their grants, they've got one project funding request, but they have combined five other projects into one, at least. And so I'm having a hard time with that because we provide funding for two projects. That's, that's our guidelines. And in the way I'm reading it, that they are actually funding, they're trying to fund five projects under the one, under, under the cap of one. So just kind of throwing that out.
Larry has his hand raised.
For him.
Hi, yeah, I was wondering about project number two in that one. I couldn't score that one at all because it seems to me that everything that in the rubric under part two visual arts projects discretionary. All of those questions were, I mean, it seemed to me that all of the, the answers to all of those questions were TBDs. So I, I ended up not scoring any because because, you know, this is the project is all in the future. So there's no way that we could score it. Or there's no way I could score. Let me put it that way.
Well, you know, and I had a little concern about that particular project. Also, the one thing that I guess I did identify was that they would put it in a public place. So I decided on what it was because they were looking for about, they actually indicated it would be in some type of a site that the public could see and that it is bronze. But I also agree that it was more to be determined than anything else. And then they noted, and it confused me a bit, that they were talking about funding for a mural, which I don't believe we funded a mural and I don't know how that came into the narrative. I just confused me. And so I'm just wondering last year, I believe we funded, was it the sculpture in the cemetery? I believe. And I don't even know if it's completed yet or not. And yet they're requesting funding for another visual arts. So I'm very concerned about this particular grant.
Joyce, I have the same recollection of the piece in the cemetery from last year.
I also have a yeah, project to put, put my hackles up a little bit, the idea of using SCFD funding to as I, as I read it, the very first groups listed in who would be recognized is city council and some other things. And I go, is that really? Is that furthering the mission of SCFD, right? So is that is really sort of, I mean, a sculpture, yes. A sculpture celebrated, you know, with everybody sort of patting themselves on the back is the way I read that. And that might not be the intention, but it's the way it came across to me in the application. And I, I just wonder what, what should be city funded? If it's city folks celebrating city folks versus what's something that's sort of SCFD funded that helps promote the tenants of SCFD throughout Adams County. So does anybody have any thoughts on that?
So you, one thing, and I read that particular sentence, I, I think city council members were part of that, but they also talked about boards and commissions and those, those folks typically are not. but they also talked about boards and commissions, and those folks typically are not, they're volunteers, you know, any kind of volunteer-type work, you know, so they're not paid. But they did throw in council members also. They did do that.
Which are very important folks, right? And they do a lot. And I've seen a lot of these sculptures on my travels, right, of like, usually from the 1800s, some influential people that did things. It just, along with, and I had the same, I had the same responses as Larry with, you know, I'm seeing on-city property, what does that, what does that mean? And I know some of those questions, because we are funding future projects, some of those questions can't be answered. And the city owns lots of property, but is it going to sit right out in a roundabout in front of City Hall? It has created more questions than answers in my mind when I read the application. So a little clarity, or at least visioning in terms, a little more vision to help me, somebody outside the organization, outside of the community, really understand fully what they're doing would be nice for the future.
It almost felt to me like it was, I want to do this, but I'm not sure if we're there yet, you know, so it was kind of. I agree what you're saying.
I just wanted to let you know that Adams County did fund a mural for this organization in 2021.
Is it completed?
I'd have to check with Dana.
See, because they're saying in the grant that the mural is not completed. It's a $90,000 mural.
That's what Adams County funded them. That's all I can see right now. I'd have to consult with Dana on any more information further than that.
Okay.
Where's that?
Wait, I was looking at that, and it said it was a sculpture on loan. Was it not a visual art project? Was it actually just a project?
It was a visual art.
So what I have in all of mine says sculpture on loan.
Instead of a mural? Or what do we?
Yeah.
That is what came in the application. It was called Through the Years Mural.
And maybe we can do this offline, because what, I don't have access to the applications once the year is over, which makes it a little challenging. So all I have just is the funding plan, which says sculpture on loan.
Yeah, and for some reason I didn't.
Oh, yeah. That's interesting. Yeah.
Which for question number five does put a little skepticism in my heart.
Well, that could, I mean, it could be, if that's what you're seeing, Kendall, it makes me think maybe it's an issue with the way it's reported out.
Zoe, in the application, it says $90,000 mural project that has not yet been completed.
Exactly.
Well, that, right, but if the council did in fact fund a mural project, it wouldn't have, had to have been completed yet because visual art projects have three years for completion. But if the council funded a sculpture on loan project and not a mural, that's where you get into the trickiness because they need to do the project that was funded. So we just need to take a look at what they applied for and what the council actually funded in 2021. Is that right, Kendall?
Yes, 2021.
It's a 2021.
Okay, so, and are they able then, for some reason I thought that you could not apply for another visual arts project until one was completed.
That's not correct. There was an error on the guidelines last year that said that, but that was not, it was an error. And so we fixed it and let the organizations know last year that that was not the case, and we have since fixed it.
Okay, all right. My mistake. I'm sorry.
You can sort of, it's like a rolling application on the visual art projects.
By rolling, you mean, I'm just trying to understand, I'm sorry. If like, I guess I just think of, I'll just use Thornton as an example because I know it. For example, like, we have a Latinx project that we've, I think was funded last year, but it takes a while to get that art placed. Is that correct?
So if there are several different things you can apply for funding in Adams County for, you can apply for a small or large project. Those are the events with a start and finish date. You can technically apply for a visual art project if it can be completed in one year as a small or large project. Then you have a visual art project, which is more of a multi-year project. So those are what we're talking about with Brighton in this particular case. And you can apply for one every year, even if you have projects that are currently open, because you have three years to complete them.
Okay. That makes sense with how long it takes to put art up.
Which is why that is the case. But there's also the case that, you know, you could do a mural within a year, and you could call it a project, you know, a large project, and have it funded in that year.
Kind of like Adams County's LGBTQ stuff during Pride?
Sort of, except for that particular case was, that was general operating funds that paid for that.
But that would be probably a good example of that because they were quick pieces that went with an event that were done in a year.
That would be a good example. Yeah, especially since it's tied to an event. It makes it even, I think, a stronger application.
Okay. Good to know.
And Joyce, going back to project one, you had mentioned, I mean, the way I read this is five different events, and they're looking for, can you reiterate what you said before, sort of your concerns about project one? Because I'm seeing five events that they want increased marketing and outreach support. Am I reading this incorrectly?
So for me, what I think I would like to see is to pick, and I don't have it in front of me, you know, but just say, you know, the first one, you know, the first project or whatever, they should be standalone projects and should be funded individually versus having all five put in under one request. That's my concern because, you know, we, at one time, we had funded up to four projects at one time when we, you know, and then we reduced it during the recession and, you know, that type of thing. And so now it's one project, you know, two projects, visual arts and GOS. And what we've found is through creative grant writing, you can kind of lump more than one project into one request. And so I just have a little, I have some issues with that.
So on the whole, my vote is, I was just saying, on the whole, the vision I'm getting, just in terms of clear feedback to this organization, is clarity of project, clarity, 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 please. How are you, how are you using, how do you want to use these funds? What are these funds specifically for? The more general things get, the more I get confused. Jim's going, Jim's going, I don't know.
I have, I have, I read a lot of obfuscating euphemisms in these things, so.
Absolutely. Megan, were you going to jump in there for a sec?
I mean, I was going to clarify, I think there's a difference, or I think differently, of a series of events throughout the year that are a series of like similar events, like concerts in the park. It could be throughout the year, different bands, but it's like a cohesive concerts in the park. We do this kind of thing, you know, over and over versus events that are very different in tone, very different in, not tone, I think I mean content, very different in content, very different in audience, very different in delivery. Like, that to me is a different project than one project of discreet events that are similar.
And I can go along with that. It's just kind of like my thought process through this whole thing. Okay. So did we want to get some clarification about number two, though, about the sculpture? Are we, as far as, you mentioned something about unique funding, or Zoe, or what?
What kind of clarification are you looking for? I would say, at this point, the Brighton Cultural Council, as far as we know, has been funded for projects. They're working on them. They haven't been completed, but nothing is problematic as far as what's due with SCFD. So what, as far as everything Aaron brought up, I don't think, there's nothing that I have to say about that. I would say that that's a scoring preference for each individual member of the council.
That's fine. I was just getting some clarification.
Yeah, yeah. And then on the project side, we do explicitly say that it needs to have a beginning and an end, and I think we address some of these things because I know it's been a concern for council members throughout the years. I can also put it back on the retreat agenda, and we can discuss further if there's something else you want to say. But in the meantime, you know what the guidelines say, you know what their grant says. Again, I would say it's a matter of voting for the individual council members at this point, would be my thought.
Right. Any other comments?
Just that our our municipal board and commission volunteers are indeed very important.
That's true.
Thank you for that.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the next organization, which is Brighton Music Choir and Orchestra, and they are asking for GOS and one project, I believe. We'll open it up for discussion.
So I love the focus on taking music out into the community. I think they came up with some really creative partners and some creative ways to bring their programming out, including the Historical Society. And I also really appreciate the thought that this organization put into their multi-year program delivery and thinking about what's sustainable and thinking about what makes sense for them to do year after year. So just props to them for thinking about sustainability.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Just give me one second. Sorry. Just looking over my notes.
Just as you're looking over your notes, I just had one quick note here, and they indicated that performers and musicians included all ages and cultures. So I think that kind of, they're looking at inclusivity and addressing the EDIA question somewhat, so. Also, the concerts are free and for the lower-income families so that they can all attend. Anyone else? Are you still reading?
I guess I'm looking at this going, they perform in lots of places, but the venue is, I guess, if somebody could help me understand this, because the project is for a specific venue in the First Presbyterian Church, or are they taking that? They're doing multiple concerts? I guess I'm confused. Is this for one location, or are they then taking that concert and doing? Because the description seems to indicate they're taking it out, but the application says Presbyterian church. Is anybody, because I'm going to be.
I think it's multiple concerts at the one location throughout the year, is what I'm thinking. I don't, I didn't write the dates down on this one. Yeah, it says 610 attendees for the year. So.
Right, and then it says, they don't have to come to us, we're going to them by going to these places. Megan, did you, sorry?
I believe they applied for general operating support, and so some of the going out into the community might be part of their GOS. So their GOS narrative says that they will seek additional opportunities to play for assisted living, senior centers, benefit concerts, and fundraisers. We don't, for the GOS, require the same kind of specific venue address that the project asks for.
It says these performances take place not only in the formal concert venue of the First Presbyterian Church, but also in more informal settings such as the county fairgrounds, car shows, and the County Historical Society.
So what are we funding? I guess that's the question is, as you're writing, you know, for me, as people are writing these, what was the phrase you used, Jim? Obfuscating. I don't think they're obfuscating at all, but this group, but I do think it's nice to have clarity because that just helps us make quick, clean decisions. Just being upfront and honest about what it is you're asking funding for. And I think they're being honest. I don't mean to imply that they're not being honest. It's just, I'm confused.
So what is the name of the project? Is it the 2024 Concert Session or Season? I season. So that tells me it's multiple concerts throughout the area, you know, throughout the 2024.
So they're not mentioning what's being funded? Is that?
It's for the season.
Aaron, is that your?
Well, like, because there's a, with other groups, right, we've seen clarity of venues, right? Because they have venues. This says, we're performing at the church. Fantastic. I know exactly, I can picture it in my mind. I know what you're asking for. It's easy for me to make decisions, you know, on that. But then, right underneath that, it says, we're also performing all these other places, which helps them score higher on certain questions, right? But without that, it's a slightly lower score. So I'm going, what do I need to be paying attention to? And just, I just need clarity, like, if there are multiple venues, could we have those listed in the venue section? That's my only thought.
Yeah, here, here. I mean, they have formal concerts at the church, and they have informal such as, and then they give us a bunch of examples, but we truly don't know how many of those informal ones there are, when they are, where they are. And it seems to me, if you're planning this sort of thing, you ought to know that I'm going to do one formal concert a quarter at the church, and I'm going to do two informal a quarter, and know where they're at, or be able to tell me they're at, or we anticipate they will be at A, B, C, D, E, and F, and then I know exactly what they're planning. Planning is a terrible thing, but it never works out. So, you know, venue burns down. Okay, I understand that.
Yeah, because we don't know what events are taking place at these other specified things, like the County Historical Society, who's going to be there to see the show? When is it? You know? The car shows, like, which car shows have been planned, and which ones are you going to? If there's car shows that happen every year on a certain day, like. If there's car shows that happen every year on a certain day, like, then you know that that's a place where they could perform and have enough people experiencing the the situation. But if it's, um, yeah, I see what you mean.
It could be the way that they're reporting. When you look at their activities and attendance, they're only reporting their formal concerts. So that could be why they didn't include those in the venue list. Because they're not actually reporting those numbers.
Yeah, it makes total sense. But are they asking, are they asking Adams County to fund? Because that's really, that's really cool. Like taking this music to a car, like what an interesting idea. Happy, happy to, I think that's a really clever way and use of funds. It helps get the mission and vision of SCFD out there. But is that what we're funding or not? So anyway, sorry, I'm not sure how to address that. I just wanted to, to bring it up and I don't need to dwell on it. I just.
But I think it's a good point, you know, and just, you know, for the organization to know that we would like some more clarity around the request. Okay. Anyone else?
I'm sorry, I don't want to be, beat the dead horse. I, I mean, the other thing is, is like, this is publicly funded money. And if most of it takes place in a Presbyterian church, how welcoming is that to like different people from different backgrounds, like to experience this as well? Just out of curiosity, because like, I know that like, for example, like, you know, here in Thornton, we've had like our choir that was only at a church. I never went there, but I know that like since our band and stuff has ventured out more, it just feels more welcoming to go to a public school or something to experience this stuff rather than a specific type of church. So just thinking about that was just something that came to mind during this discussion.
I think the venue accessibility is worth considering with impact scoring.
It is. Good points. Anyone else? Yes, I can, I can see Aaron.
But again, I would score the impact differently. If I could know for certain if there, and I get, is there a way to, I guess it's not, have other people asked this question? No, is it only Adams County? I remember somebody saying there was like a questions page that we can reference. But I think it's only, but it's not for other county. This project isn't for other counties. So.
Yeah, they only, it looks like, well, I, I shouldn't say that, but uh, because they can request, you know, to any other county, but I don't think they did. Uh, but I, but I did go into the repository to look and there wasn't any comments from anyone. So.
That's I'm new. Have you all considered that in the past, like with venues and? Has that been something you all discussed in the past?
We've discussed it for many organizations that we do always appreciate and reflect in the scoring specificity with locations where organizations are naming the venues that they're working with. Um, and also to your point about what types and kinds of venues we, you know, look at whether a venue is like particularly like well-placed, inclusive, welcoming, um, like what, what makes a, what makes impact?
Yeah, I'll just speak out of like, I know from my, as a woman of color, I don't know that I would feel comfortable going to like a random church like that to see something just saying.
I, I think that's a very good point of view to reflect. And I, I think particularly when we, we think about reach and, and how people are sharing their programs with others, I think the place that they have it is a really impactful or not impactful. I think it, it really influences attendance.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just was thinking that, like, I could never imagine my family packing up the car to go like as I, you know, I growing up in, in Adams County to the Presbyterian Church to see music. But we did go to the rec centers and things like that. Do you see what I'm saying? Just thinking about that.
It just feels more community possibly.
Yeah. And not that I would be like, I would feel that I'm in a place where it's, it just wouldn't feel right or, yeah.
Won't someone think of the atheists?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. All good comments.
There are, there aren't many of us there, there. I'm gonna out myself there. I don't find many people who are willing to be like, yeah, I'm an atheist except me. It's usually me and I'm usually alone in that club. And I go, all right. That being said.
Not anymore, Aaron. You're not alone anymore.
Guys, okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you so much.
All right. So do we have any other, other than maybe any clarity? Uh, you want some more clarity that possibly next time around? I, you know, hopefully the organizations are listening, you know? So with that, is there any other comments about Brighton Music Choir and Orchestra? All right, hearing that, we'll move to the Mexican Cultural Center and I think they're, yes, they are asking for two projects. Um, so we'll open it up for discussion.
My finger was hovering over the unmute button because I'm very excited to talk about this. Um, I just wanted to say that Cinema Cultural is very cool and I love this innovation. I think this is a new kind of project. I, I think that it has a new reach, both geographically and with the audience that it's reaching. And it just sounds like an overall really cool project, also one that has its own kind of diversified funding built into the project with concessions and, and what it's bringing in. The other comment that I made was that with the project one requesting fourteen thousand for Adams County. The total project request, they, they gave us the budget for the full project, but noted that fourteen thousand is going to Adams County and that's the amount of funding that we're asking for. So I would just say arguably that's, um, looking for 100% of the project that impacts Adams County, arguably. I think it's debatable. Um, and with that, uh, I really wanted to unmute and say that because I have to sign off. Good night, everyone. I'll see you.
You take care. Thank you for hanging in there. Okay. Okay. And then what did I see? The request of fourteen thousand was for Adams County, but it doesn't match with the project summary of the thirty-two thousand. So I think what they did was they added all the counties together to get the thirty-two thousand instead of putting the fourteen in there. At least that's the way I read it. So in the project summary in the grant, it says thirty-two thousand, but the project request is fourteen.
Um, speaking. That is exactly what we did, um, based on the application that was submitted. There was a lump sum of all the, uh, the totals for that. And the way our new grant.
Sorry, Jesse. Yeah, I, you have to be recused from this.
Oh, yeah. You're right. You're right.
So thanks for the input. Okay. But anyway, you know, that's noted and I think Jesse understands that he, he caught that right away. So, okay.
So how does that, but how does that affect newbie? How, how does that affect?
It's just that we like balanced budgets and we like to see the numbers in the appropriate areas, you know, of the grant and it just, it doesn't really affect it at all. And then we like to see everything balanced, you know? So if it, they request for fourteen, it should be fourteen throughout the budget request instead of thirty-two. And they just added all the counties together and put it in that one one area for the project summary.
I know I said it earlier, but I really like this idea of them including transportation. In terms of outreach, if you're, if you're really going to transportation and transportation scholarships to to low-income schools in Adams County, I think that's so important. Living in a minority majority neighborhood myself and a low-income neighborhood, um, it, I see that as a huge access to, and I really want to applaud, applaud anybody that thinks about nuts and bolts ways of getting people to their programming. I think it's really wonderful. So.
And I was, I was looking at project two and it's pretty interesting to me, you know, where it's more of an immersive event, which I really like, you know, so that everybody is partaking in it and enjoying it through all kinds of things like food, dancing, all that type of thing in the, in the Mexican culture. I re, I really think that's great. And I like the idea also that they've identified that they have some issues and that they're updating and revising their bylaws in their policies and procedures. So I think that's, that's great for them to do that.
If the film is screened in Denver, if the project is in Denver.
Transportation you're talking about?
Well, no, no, I'm just saying in general, like the film project is obviously in Denver. So when, when judging it, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, just. You know, we're judging, how does this affect Adams County Arts and Culture? Adams County, you know, our, this commission then could potentially be handing money to a project that is in anybody want to speak on that? How they feel about that?
Well, there's a question of how this is written, but I read that is it's going to be at the Parsons Theater, which is North Glenn and then in the other center in Denver.
So it'd be two locations.
Yeah, got it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Great. So there is direct. Yep.
It's, it's not the, the best punctuated sentence, but that's what I read.
And it's right there in venues. This is my eyes glazing over, I think, after hours and hours. Cool. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on to the next organization, which is Chalk Chicano Humanities and Arts Council. They are requesting funding for two projects. So I'll open that up for discussion.
Yeah, I like that they are going to be featuring on project to the Latina female artists and actually doing a showcase in Adams County, of course. Um, I think there's so much about wanting to have representation and I think having a feature of Latina artists in Chicano artists would be really exciting and cool to actually feature. I haven't seen something like that in a while. And I think there, that that'd be a really interesting exhibit to see.
And they're holding it over at the Armory, which is well-attended. So, yeah. Anyone else have any comments? No? Okay. I will move on then to our next organization, which is CM Dance, and they are requesting funding for two projects also. I kind of, this looks like a real fun event, especially for the hot jazz jamboree over at Gaylord Resort. It's always, and I think that they've, they've done this not always at the Gaylord, but I think they did it over at the because the Ramada Inn off of the hundred and twentieth and the highway a couple of years ago, you know, and it was Balboa. I think they called it Balboa event, but it's well-attended. The youth really enjoy it. There's a lot of free events, especially for the Adams County folks. And I know it is well-attended.
Reading in their narrative, um, sort of acknowledging trauma-informed techniques of, of education that really popped out to me. I thought that was just a really, I, I've never heard that phrase before, but suddenly I went, that's brilliant. So making sure that we understood, again, clarity of language. I knew exactly what they're talking about and what a fantastic thing to pop in to help give me context for all the, the way that they approach all their programming. So those really.
So they did have an evaluation done at the end of the year, the last year, and it looks like they also identified some issues and they are working on them this year and next. So we're looking forward to seeing how they solve all these, the issues that they found. They also provide art forms for, in concerning social change and social justice. So. Any other comments? Not hearing any? Okay. We'll move to the next organization, which is Colorado Bach Ensemble. And it looks like they're asking funding for one project.
I was just reviewing kind of the, the budget on there. Um, can you receive general operating into SCFD counties?
Yeah, no. Well, it depends.
Yes, you can if you comply with the guidelines. They're slightly different for some of the counties.
Okay. No, I thought it was interesting. I like the collaboration with Westminster High School. They have a really good music program there. Um, and a program that they're doing in Westminster Public Schools. Yeah, I think it's, uh, it's certainly a very specific genre of music to be introducing and to have students be introduced to. Um, I do like the coaching aspect for that. Um, it's a pretty significant amount going with still some potential fees for the concert. And one of the things that I kind of just noticed was just kind of the outreach around the Spanish-speaking outreach. Um, and why need to do bilingual? Just trying to think about, I was going through board and staff and didn't really see like any individuals, well, may possibly, I, I can't say that, but just thinking about ways to be culturally relevant in doing the outreach. Um, and just trying to see if, uh, what kind of strategies there might be around being mindful in doing bilingual and culturally relevant outreach and marketing. You know, just trying to see the connection of getting more bilingual Spanish speakers to, uh, you know, attend a concert like the Bach, which is pretty specific in the repertoire. So just wanting to see how that might be you know, focused on and what kind of strategies they might be considering as a further, as far as that.
That's a good point. So just to some of us, I noticed that they said they offered diverse repertoire. All venues are accessible to everyone in programming in a non-religious venue. So I just thought I'd throw that out there, you know? So I just thought I'd throw that out there, you know. Partnerships help reach out to all, to the underserved. And they are trying to work on diversifying the board. It appears that they, they are very aware, you know, that they need to move forward with that.
And access to the, the tiered ticketing structure, I think is. Is, is really important. I think that's a great way for groups that are used to bringing in. A significant amount of revenue through ticket sales. Um, you know, not everybody can give away free tickets and I fully acknowledge that. And, and I'm not sure that free is always the answer. Um, and that's my personal opinion, however. Having, I think this is a, I think this is a good way to acknowledge that there are people that may want to engage in the content that um. Could, could use um, a tiered structure. So that's great.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll go to our next organization. Colorado Celebration of African American Arts and Culture, and they are requesting funding for one project. And for, you know, clarification, this is the Black Arts Festival that they're asking funding for. You know what I like is the way they broke out the amount of money that they're using for what areas. So they're saying. A certain amount of money will cover cost of fencing and barricades, that type of thing. And the remainder would be funding for. Uh, honorariums for the artists or uh, that type of thing. So I, I appreciate the breakout. And it looks like the way they had broken it out that they have uh. Over thirty-five hundred residents from Adams County that uh, attend the festival. In all types of interactive learning for children as well as adults.
I uh, was noticing the uh. Uh, the way they cut, the way they um. Broke out the, the attended uh, uh, anticipated attendees. And were saying that Adams County Residence. Is about eight point eight percent, eight point, eight point nine percent essentially. And um. Well, I, I could be wrong, but uh, to me that uh. That had uh, an effect on my impact boat, my, my impact scoring. Because. There's not a lot of impact. And, and, and I guess they're requesting accordingly, so it's, it's, it's not that bad, I guess.
But again, going back to the, the folks that are bringing up, just if people are watching this and they're seeing what other groups are responding, I mean. Transportation to in front, you know, bringing groups of, you know, collaborations with Adams County Schools or, or groups. I'm not seeing that in this. Um, which I, I feel the same way, but if there's a way to. Really think creatively about how to engage Adams County Residents other than. Come on in, which is great that they're tracking that. And I think that's wonderful that they're tracking metrics, but. Maybe think a little creative, creatively about. About fundable ways to. To bring more Adam, really engage Adams County folks.
Yeah, and, and I guess it could be that, you know, they look at the percentage of. You know, of Adams County Residents that come down there and benefit from the show because it's not in Adams County. Um, and considering that they're only, you know, nine percent. Of their whole audience, maybe they think it's uh. Maybe they think it's worth it for what they're, for what they're asking. So, I mean. I. I guess I need to re. I guess I need to rethink that a little, but it's. Uh, I, it's, it's not as bad as I, I first looked at. And, and, and what you're saying about transportation. Uh, uh, I agree with Aaron, except if it's not worth it for the number of people that they would. That they would end up transporting.
You know, and I think they noted um, also that some of their executive board actually. Lives in Adams County and many of the volunteers come from Adams County. And they're actually utilizing um, some of the businesses that provide. Barricades and fencing, that they are Adams County businesses, that they are, so they are trying to utilize um, Adams County as much as they can. So I.
Agreed.
Yeah. But, and it is a weekend, so I don't know if you can get transportation for s- for kids for school. I mean, you know, I mean, it's.
I, I didn't mean to bring up specifically transportation. I was just saying in terms of. In terms of actual connection to Adams County Residents, how can you paint? How can you paint a picture if your event is outside of Adams County like this? And very important, Adams County Residents, and they're picking wonderful locations that benefit Adams County Residents. Just making a. Our vendors come from Adams County doesn't. Doesn't really get me all excited. I mean, it's cool, but.
I understand. I, I understand, but I just thought I'd bring it out, you know, so, yeah.
And I, and I think some in, um, in previous years, we talked about um. Doing like extensions. So if there's programming or artists that are, you know, for the Black Arts Festival in Denver, that they could actually, you know. Think about extensions of programming in the, in the county. So working with schools or other, you know, artists in Adams County or other organizations. You know, having extension exhibits, let's say anything, for instance. Um, so those are kind of some of the, the thoughts we've kind of recommended for others. Uh, there's going to be other applicants. That do similar type of programming who, who listen to the feedback and have done actual programming in Adams County now. Um, so, yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Alrighty, so we're to our last organization for the evening. And that is Colorado Chambers Chamber Players, and they are requesting funding for one project. So you just, I kind of um, enjoyed the fact that um, they were looking at non-traditional venues. Such as mental health centers and hospitals and homeless centers. Um, I, I think that's uh. Very good. Um, and also I did want to note that all the concerts are, are actually in Aurora. And I was just wondering if maybe they could expand into other areas of Adams County.
Although as an Aurora resident, I haven't seen a lot of Aurora events yet, yet. I know we're early in the process, so I go. Ah, somebody cares about Aurora.
No, well, there's three concerts over at the People's Building. I think they get a, they're pretty diverse and uh, as far as their composers and they use women, uh, which is. It's becoming more of a norm, you know, but it's still not common. So I think that's great. And they're, uh, again, they're over at Children's Hospital, which I really like that idea. I think that's really good, you know, to have. The kids and, and the staff enjoy that.
Somebody who's uh, in the nonprofit world. Um, explain to me this idea of furloughing your executive director. If they, is that, is that a common, that, that says that in terms of financial stability, that scares me a little bit. Um, it's like, cause your executive director, at least in my mind, is the person helping you get out of those. Um, very difficult situations or creating a strategy where they sh- don't have to be furloughed. Um, did that raise any flags for anybody else? I'm going to, I, I'm not a professional nonprofit manager. Um.
Jesse, you want to jump in there just a little bit? I don't know if you have an answer.
Yeah, I mean, it's um, I mean, for financial stability, I mean, they're mindful. Of certainly keeping their organization up and running. Um, and maintaining its sustainability. I mean, that's a, a strategy for sure. Uh, to, to make sure that there's a continuation of the organization. Um, could it be an indicator of like, you know, financial stability? Uh, it could be either good or bad. Um, you know, uh, just depends on the organization and. Impact and delivery of service and whether there are be, uh, whether they're going to be able to close at the end of the year in black. So, yeah, i- i- it's, it's probably small enough to, um, so. Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I don't want to be judgmental and I, I just want to be like, you know. Give you, it could be in favor of based on the board's decision and financial stability and maintaining the organization into the future, so.
Aaron, I spent thirty-some odd years in five oh one C threes and that tells you a whole lot more about your executive director. Than it does anything about the organization. To be willing to accept that. Tells me a lot about that executive director, a lot more than it tells me about the organization. That's. My bias. And it's a deep-seated bias, but.
No, that's great. That's great insight. Again, I'm not a nonprofit manager. I, I live in the for-profit sector for the most part, so. Yeah, that's great. That's a really good, to me, that, that helps. That's a nice paradigm.
It is good. Anyone else? All right. It looks like we've concluded our study session for this evening. So. I saw that. Um, is there any comments from the board before we adjourn? Hearing none? Seeing none?
I just want to say thank.
I'm sorry.
We are adjourned.
I didn't, oh.
Oh, okay. I retract that.
I'm sorry, I just had a quick question. Um. I was looking through all of this and I saw another one I might possibly have to recuse myself from. And I wasn't sure if my son's. On the Thornton Community Band, should I recuse myself from that application? Or does that matter?
Candle, does that come with a conflict of interest if her son plays in the board?
Um, because it's not you directly, that is up to your decision. If you feel that it would just be cleaner to recuse yourself. Um, then feel free, we can add that to your list. Just email it to Dana. Um, or if you feel that you can have an unbiased opinion about it. But I always err to be cautious and always just keep things as clean as you can. I just thought about it as he was leaving and I was like, oh yeah, he's going to band. Oh yeah, it's. Think about it earlier, this is silly. And I was like, oh yeah, it's one of them. So yeah, I'll, I'll think about it here and probably recuse myself. Thanks for bringing it up. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank everybody. And I know if people are, if people are watching, these organizations are watching this. This is a really supportive group and I feel, I'm brand new to this and I feel very supported by everybody here and um. And I, I'm really excited about the quality of, of this process that a S F D has provided. I mean, this feels. Really legit. And it's, it's, it's exciting. It's exciting part of, so th- thanks to the other, thanks to the other uh, commission folks to. To help guide us newbies through, cause it's, this was so much better than I thought it was going to be. Process today in conversation, so.
Yeah, you know. And it's a refresher for everyone, the, the questions that you ask, you know, sometimes. Those of us that have funded for a while, you know, you, it's a good refresher of these questions, you know, bring forward. So it's good. It's all good.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point. And I, I, I think that. Um, well, on behalf of Adams County, thank you to all of you for volunteering your, you know, your precious time and your insight. Um, but it, as we're going through this process, you know, there are things that are worthy of further discussion and, and we, we, we add those to the list and. And put them on the agenda for later meetings to talk in further detail. So if you have anything um, that you want on that list, certainly let us know.
All right.
Uh, I have one last question and it's, it's, it's an update on my lost uh, application. It was the. Chicano Humanities and Arts Council.
Okay, let me look real quick while you're on here. That I think I saw accidentally went to conflict. Yes, I'll move it back. Um. Yeah, accidentally went to conflict of interest, so it disappeared from your portal. That makes our sense.
I just deny it every time I hit conflict of interest. I go, no, I didn't do that. All right. Anything else? Thank you guys. I'll see you next week. All right.
Oh, one more thing.
Yes.
Uh, we've got twenty more next week, right? Or do we?
Believe so.
Okay.
Yes, and Melvin will follow up with. The agenda, which has the list on it. And if for some reason you, you can't find it or, or it gets lost, you don't get it. It's also on the S C F D website under the Adams County list. There's a, a breakdown of all four weeks. Um, and then we can also resend out the calendar. That will show you um, when the scores are due, but it is about a week after. So you've got about five weeks from now. Four weeks from now.
Seems to me like it's only three days after. You know, this time, I mean, the scores are due almost immediately, only because we're doing it.
Yeah. We might have done that. We might have actually crunched down the time. It might have been a week in past and now it's less time, so.
Just a couple of days, I think, if I remember correctly, but we can look that in people age extended. Maybe we can, I'm not sure, so.
If we don't have to, that would be great, just because of the, the work on the backend and we need your scores in order to do all of that.
Yeah.
But certainly if people need, if you've, if you've got something going on, just let us know.
Will do.
So just for the, the newbies, right? So even for us, like we um, based on today's conversation, if you feel good with your scores and you don't revise them. You could submit these, or should we wait? Zoe.
You know.
Should we wait till the end? Or you could do like, after tonight, you could be like, okay, I'm good with these ones and ready to submit.
I, I, I would say it's, it's up to you. There's no further discussion to be had about these organizations, so. And the scores don't impact the other scores unless it does as part of your process. If, for example. You score organizations really high and then as time goes on, you read more applications, which makes you rethink the scores. That you put in, then I would recommend that you wait, but if you feel confident that you are. Scoring and, and you feel like you've, you understand the grants and. Then I'd say go ahead and submit them, but that's just my opinion.
You know, and that's what I do, you know, I have actually gone through these uh. Uh, applications and grants a couple of times already, just going through and changing the score. So I think in every time I read. An additional one, then I go, oh, there was something about the one I read. Yesterday that I want to go back and, you know, so I, I wait until, this is me. I wait until just. The last day or so, but it's easy to submit these. I mean, you know, it's not, you know, so I, it just takes maybe an hour or less.
Yeah, I felt that, I felt like that might be like a lingering question, so. When you go through the seventy, you're like, oh, this was a really good application. And you're like, oh, how does that weigh with impact and creativity and. Enterprise and so forth. So just wanted to plant that seed.
Yep, yep.
Just to let everybody know, I will be sending out the. Agenda and the invitation link on Friday of every, after every meeting.
Wow, thank you, Melvin.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, and if, if. Yeah, and if, if these will be, also be posted. I guess you already said that, Joyce, but it'll be probably Monday or Tuesday of next week.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Kendall, for stepping in. Definitely. It's great to see you.
Good to see you all. Yeah.